I'm opening the special town meeting. This is not printed in your book, so I'm going to read it a little slower than usual. We typically open our town meetings with what are called moderator's motion. I just asked for some unanimous consent on some procedural issues. First, that the meeting dispense with the reading of the warrant and the constable's return of service of that warrant, and that the moderator not be required to read the warrant articles verbatim, but may refer to them by the number and/or subject matter. Two, that the moderator may extend the floor to town management and staff and other non-voters, provided that they must first be recognized by the moderator. And three, that the moderator pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 15, be allowed to declare a two-thirds vote rather than having to take a standing count for a two-thirds vote. Hearing no objection, those are adopted. Before we start, I want to introduce everybody to the man on the left of the blue table there is Matt, and he is our new town council. We like to change town council about every 50 years, so it was time. And with that, we're going to jump right in on Article One regarding the 250th anniversary. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 to cover expenses incurred by the 250th Celebration Committee, set amount to be offset by receipt of state and private charitable trust funds.
Thank you. You have a motion, and I have a second. Is there any discussion of this motion? Mr. Brewer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Unaccustomed to public speaking as I am, I did want to speak in favor of this motion. I was in Barry 50 years ago when we celebrated our anniversary, and I know that the committee is going to do a spectacular job and will leave memories for young people for the rest of their lives, quite honestly. I also want to commend the town officials that are here serving in public office. It's a very difficult challenge, and I also don't want to leave out you people who are at the town meeting tonight as well. Town meetings are the purest form of democracy. Even Norman Rockwell painted the painting Freedom of Speech of a person at a town meeting. Now, this $100,000 for this, we have diligently working. The legislature, the House of Representatives, is in session this evening, and the next three nights consolidating amendments, and I do believe there will be an amendment for $25,000 if it comes to pass. Nothing's done until it's done in this world. That would help offset this. The second role that I had when I retired was being the president of the Barry Savings Charitable Foundation. Over the past six years, we have contributed over $600,000 to entities in the Quavon region and Princeton and Paxton, the catchment areas. Again, nothing is done till it's done, but we are going to entertain a motion for another $25,000 to help offset that. So the language of the motion that Richie Stevens has put up here tonight, and he's doing a great job for this committee, says up two. So there's a chance that the legislature and the Barry Savings Charitable Foundation will offset $50,000 of that $100,000. And I am committed to doing my level best to making sure that happens so that everybody has a great time celebrating this town, which was once named Hutchinson, just so you'll know, before it became Barry. And if you want a lecture on that, stop at the house. I'll be happy to do that. And while I have the floor, I just wanted to say, I am the father-in-law of a first responder outside of Chicago, Skokie, Illinois. He's a lieutenant on the fire department here, and I support our first responders and I support our fire departments. You judge a community by the way they can save lives and improve the quality of lives for all, and I support those motions as well. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Yes, Hillary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Hillary Bedrow. I live on Washburn Road. While I appreciate all of you, I'm going to speak to all of you. I am on the 250th year committee, and for the past four years, we've been working diligently to raise money for this town for a large celebration. This has been something that we envisioned would be massive and wonderful and very community-oriented, and unfortunately, as you all know, we were hit with COVID, which really dampened everything we could do for years. We wanted to come to the town and ask for money sooner. Unfortunately, we could not because town was not able to certify money at the point at that time. We would like to do things such as, you know, the ice skating rink again, the food truck festival that happens in the center of town in September. We want to have a New Year theme fall. We want to have a huge parade and fireworks. Some of you were here for the '99, the 2025 festival, and that had a huge fireworks thing. A lot of my friends recognize that, remember that. So if you have any questions, we'd love to have you at meetings. We'd love to have you guys all participate with you with us as a huge community, but I ask you to support this motion, and hopefully we only need 50,000, but if we need the 100,000, that the town gives it to us so that we can all enjoy this event. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We really don't need applause after people who, other than Steve, of course, we had to have applause after Steve. Any other questions or comments about this motion? Hearing none, I'm going to move to a vote. I'm going to call for the yays and nays. If you vote yea, then you're voting that we approve this motion and authorizing the town to spend that money, offset as it may be. If you vote no, then you're voting against that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Excuse me. Oh, I don't know. Finance, were you favorable to that?
Yeah.
Okay, now we know. I'll try and remember to ask you before we vote next time. We're moving on to Article Two, Mass. Munifin Consulting Services. Do I have a motion? Please step all the way to the microphone.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate or borrow or transfer from available funds.
Either speak louder or closer to the mic.
Okay, that's better.
Yep.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate or borrow or transfer from available funds the sum of $39,611.26 to pay for consulting services for the treasurer collector's office.
I need you to make a motion that specifies a funding source, not the thing in the warrant article. Can you try that again?
I can. To see if the, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate and from transfer from free cash, $39,611.26 to pay for consulting services for the treasurer collector's office.
I have a motion and a second. Raise and appropriate and transfer from free cash are two different things. So is it transfer from free cash, is that where?
Yes.
The funding source? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to transfer from free cash to pay for those consulting services, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
What is consulting fee for?
Please don't yell out questions. You've got to stand up, walk over, and say who you are and ask your question. Thank you.
I'm just curious what the consulting fee is for. What is the consultant for?
Thank you. There's a question of what is the consultant for. Ms. Marshall, can you answer that?
Yes, last spring, the treasurer for the town of Barry decided to take another position somewhere else in the state. When he left, obviously, we needed to search for a new treasurer. We were able finally to get the treasurer that was necessary to do our business in the fall. For that period of time, when that treasurer was gone and we had not found a new candidate that was acceptable to us, we needed a consulting service to come in and perform the duties of the treasurer.
Are there any other questions about the motion or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to go to a vote. If you vote yea, you're authorizing the transfer from free cash of $39,611.26. Yes?
We are required to respond.
Oh, yeah. Finance committee recommendation.
The finance committee is favorable for this.
Thank you. Okay, so if you vote yes, we're going to transfer that from free cash to pay that bill. If you vote no, we wouldn't. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're moving on to Article Three. I'm going to warn you, it's a little complicated. Do we have a motion?
The motion, the town moved to vote to amend the vote taken under Article 17 of the June 14, 2022 annual town meeting that provided the town to borrow the sum of $305,000 to purchase and equip a new ambulance and to further authorize the select board to enter into a lease purchase financing agreement in accordance with the provisions of General, Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), for a period of up to five years for said purchase, and to use such appropriation as the funding source for this purpose.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. You'll notice that that's a lot less words than appeared in the warrant article. I'm ruling this in scope. It is, the wording about debt exclusion's been eliminated, it wasn't made in the motion. So I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion of this motion?
If there is clarification necessary, our attorney is here, and the language that has been included in this motion this evening is the result of conversations between the budget and finance committee, select board, and our attorney. So our attorney is here to field questions of specific nature that the assembly might be interested in.
Thank you. I have somebody in the back.
I'm Michael Wood. To clarify, this item is not subject to a debt exclusion?
Can our council explain the situation with lease purchase agreements and debt exclusions?
Yes. Hello? Okay.
Yep.
Yes, as currently moved, there would be no debt exclusion. A lease purchase agreement is an alternative borrowing arrangement, provide for under statute. It's fairly recent in creation under the general laws, but it cannot and would not be debt excluded. It was two, there were two options essentially we included in the article, to either amend the borrowing purpose, to do a traditional debt issuance and borrowing that would be debt excluded, or in the alternative, to enter a lease purchase agreement. So as moved currently, it is a lease purchase agreement. And that lease purchase would be paid out of the annual budget?
The question is, would the lease purchase be paid out of the annual budget?
Yes, for the term of years. So currently, it's a five-year term, so each year, it is a binding obligation of the town, so each year, the town would have to appropriate the funds to pay that annual payment. It essentially breaks out the payments, the overall costs over a set period of time, but there's, the interest is different, it's just structured differently than bonds or bands or however else you would issue the debt.
Sure.
Finance commissions?
Yeah, well, I'll ask the finance committee for the recommendation. Finance committee?
It's Tom Fox.
Could you step to the mic?
Mr. Moderator, Dan Jewell, Woods Road. I chair the finance committee here in town. Last year, the 2022 annual town meeting, the language of the article was for a seven-year lease purchase agreement. That language has changed to five years in this article here. That does mean the impact, the operating budget, is going to have a higher dollar amount per year coming out of that operating budget on a lease purchase. The finance committee does feel that we could absorb the cost of the ambulance through a five-year lease purchase, but it's going to be a challenge. It will be a challenge looking out five years as costs have increased substantially this past year, multitude of wages, labor, fuel, oil, diesel oil, all the things that we're experiencing now, trying to build the 2024 budget. So keep in mind on the lease purchase, we do feel the ambulance, so we're favorable for a five-year lease purchase, but it's going to be tough.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
Hi, can you guys hear me? Mike Paulier, 330 Spring Hill Road. I'm just wondering, it says 305. Is that it, or is that at the end of the lease term? Is there going to be a kind of a lump sum dollar amount that has to be paid to purchase?
That's a good question. Can someone answer that?
Yeah, so for a true lease purchase agreement, it's a, sometimes it's a dollar, but it's a zero payment essentially. At the end of it, you pay the costs spread over the term of years. If there were a larger payment at the end, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a proper lease purchase agreement. So at the end, it's a de minimis payment. Yeah. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Cheryl Southwick, Wollwynet Road. What impact will this have on my tax bill? Being retired and living on a fixed income, that's a very important thing to me.
There's a question of what's the tax impact of entering into this lease purchase agreement? Can finance committee give us some insight in that? At the microphone, please.
So if the lease purchase is put in through the impact of the operating budget, it will really be within the 2.5% levy limit, and we were hoping that the ambulance department would be able to restructure some of their income, because the ambulance does bring revenue into town. There's additional contracts we have with other towns such as Hardwick, and it is a source of revenue as well as an expenditure. So we're hoping that some of that revenue can come in and help offset this, but we wouldn't, we don't forecast, I should say. We do not forecast that it's going to increase taxes above whatever the levy limit is, as long as it stays within the five years and as a lease purchase agreement. I mean, rough numbers, $305,000, that does not include interest. That lease purchase is going to have interest, that's going to come out to, this is not an exact figure, but you know, if you do basic math, $65,000 a year has an impact to the operating budget. It does mean the town will end up with less free cash when we go through and certify, and it does mean that the overall operating budget is going to be impacted. So if there's an increase in costs in another department for whatever reason, such as unexpected departure, like when we had the treasurer collector, we're going to have to figure out a source of funding. Things are lean on the budget right now, so, but to answer your question, I don't see immediate impacts as a lease purchase through the operating budget.
Thank you. The gentleman in, yeah. Ken, want to say something?
Thomas Tuttle, Wheelwright Road. My question is, why do we need a new ambulance?
Okay. Does, can someone answer that question?
My name's James Deverdilla. I'm currently the acting assistant chief of the Barry Fire Department. I'll try to answer that question as fast as I can.
Can you speak up, please? Get real close to the mic.
The ambulance that this would be replacing is a 2016 ambulance with currently 128,000 miles on it. On an average run for the ambulance from the town of Barry is 50 miles each way. We usually go to the city of Worcester. The maintenance fees for this ambulance are starting to rack up. The ambulance was built, it was acquired when the fire department took over the ambulance service. It was not the greatest ambulance for the area. It has a very light front end. We are constantly repairing the suspension, the brakes. It's getting towards its end of life for Barry.
Thank you. Mr. Lipson?
Sam Lipson on West Street. In the previous debt exclusion, the administration and the finance were able to definitively tell us, and I'm talking about the last debt exclusion, which we had within a month ago, I'm guessing, where we all went to the ballot and we said yes or no, they were able to say that, and please correct me if I'm not, if I don't have the correct numbers, that on each person's taxes, there would be an increase, I think it was $28 a quarter. Are we able to, and anytime there's a debt exclusion, there's a debt exclusion for this ambulance. I'm not saying we need it or we don't need it, because I don't know, I'm not in that department, but we were able to determine what it's going to cost for this, for instance, this young lady here, who's on a, who's in a fixed income, and she knows that last time she needed to come up with $28 a quarter. Is there a way for this debt exclusion and any additional debt exclusion that we have to discuss today to definitively tell us what the bottom line figure is going to be so folks that are on a fixed income, like this young lady here, are able to understand how, what they have to save or what they have to cut out in order to pay the taxes?
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
There is no debt exclusion on the floor right now. So this is not a motion for a debt exclusion, just so everyone's clear. They didn't say the words debt exclusion when they made the motion. There is no debt exclusion on the floor, and actually, if debt exclusion doesn't even need a town meeting vote, that's something that the Board of Selectmen would do separately with regular borrowing. So there's no debt exclusion, and the other part of your comment was to a question that was already asked, which was, what's the tax impact, which the finance chair answered. Yes, Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Matt Urban, Williamsville Road. Question I have on this is if this gets approved at special town meeting, is that going to affect the FY '23 budget or FY '24 budget?
Do we have an answer for that question?
The thing that you have to understand is, we will not take delivery of these vehicles probably for 18 months to 24 months. I know it seems absurd, but it takes a long time to build a fire truck, and it takes longer than going out and buying a Subaru to get the ambulance. So you will not see an impact on your tax bill at all for the next year, because we won't have the vehicles. I would suspect not in FY '24, not in, probably even in FY '25 for the fire truck that we'll talk about in a minute. James, can you give me an idea about timeframe for the ambulance?
It's 12 to 18 months.
From, okay, 12 to 18 months for the ambulance and a little longer than that for the fire truck that we'll talk about in a moment. If those vehicles, we're talking about FY '26, probably not FY '24.
So just to clarify, we don't actually start spending money until the vehicles are delivered? Mr. Turney? Yes?
Just to clarify, that's when we'll take delivery, but we'll need an appropriation to enter the lease purchase agreement. So that will likely be worked into the budget if this is approved for the next year, and then we can sign the contract and start getting this manufactured and delivered. But the whole concept here is we're paying it out of the existing budget. We're not excluding any debt or increasing taxes. It's more of a financial exercise, this type of borrowing, than an issuance of debt or a raising of taxes.
Thank you. The man in the back, did you have a question?
Mark Carlson, Broad Street. My question was, are we adding to the fleet or are we replacing a truck?
Can I get an answer to that question?
James Deverdilla, we'll be replacing a truck.
Do a follow-up?
Yes. What are we doing with the old one when we require the new one? I believe they are going to take it and trade.
It was a 2016. So then the funds from that will be applied to the 305. Okay.
Thank you. Was there a question over here? Yep.
Mr. Moderator, Mike Koval, Old Hardwick Road, member of the Barry Fire Department. I think I sat here last year in May in good faith, the town citizens agreed to not only approve the fire truck, but the ambulance and the finance committee was favorable. My understanding is, and I direct my question to either town council or to whoever wants to answer it, my understanding is there's a contract signed to order those vehicles, and if we do not pass this, what is the town's liability specific to the contractual agreement to the breach of contract?
I think town council, maybe you can answer that, because this is a motion to amend that previous.
Yes, that's a very good question. So there's not a contract signed currently, but there is an approval to borrow for this purpose already. If the town wanted to, based on last year's vote, could go borrow, issue bonds for the purpose of purchasing these vehicles. The previous town administrator and the current administration looked at the town's finances and determined that a lease purchase agreement would be a more financially prudent means of financing this purchase, but that's a slightly different statute. There's a slightly different procedure. It's a specialized financing agreement. So we're now asking to amend that previous authorization so that the town can enter that type of financing agreement. It's a very niche, kind of a specialized financing agreement that specifically requires a separate town meeting vote. The authorization to borrow that the town already received last year and could act upon remains valid, but we're amending that to allow for this separate financing arrangement, essentially. Okay?
Any other questions?
I would also just like to clarify that last year at the 2022 annual town meeting, the sum that was approved was $365,000. This has been amended down to $305,000.
Thank you. Any other discussion? The town clerk has asked that I get the written motion in advance so that I can read it. Just to make sure that everybody's clear on what we're voting on, the motion was that the town amend the vote taken under Article 17 of last year's town meeting that provided the town to borrow the sum to, yeah, that's a little odd. Okay, so the motion is to amend the vote taken under Article 17 of last year's town meeting. We want to borrow a sum of $305,000 to purchase and equip a new ambulance and to further authorize the select board into a lease purchase financing agreement in accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), for a period of up to five years for said purchase, and to use such appropriation as the funding source for this purpose. Does everybody understand what we're voting on? Are there any other questions or comments? I have one more. You need to go all the way up to the mic if you can ask a question.
Mike Wood, Fisher Road. At the end of five years, who owns the ambulance?
The question is, at the end of five years, who owns the ambulance? The answer is the town of Barry.
It would be paid for and we would have it to trade in on another vehicle in the future.
Yeah, it's a lease purchase agreement, so this is just a way of financing to purchase. Ms. Urban?
Matt Urban, Williamsville Road. The way you just read that motion, the only funding you referenced was to appropriate, which is through your taxes, correct? Rather than transfer of funds, which would come from your ambulance revenue, which is a separate revenue? And so I'm wondering if it should be limited to appropriate or should say appropriate and/or transfer of funds to make sure that if the ambulance revenues are going to be used to pay this, that we write the motion correctly? Is that an accurate statement?
Well, we can't have a motion that says two different funding sources with an or. So I want a motion that says where the money is coming from. It says appropriate. If Town Council agrees that that's not the right wording, I would entertain an amendment to fix that. Town Council?
Yes, so the funding source is going to be, is going to be determined at the annual in June. This, the motion should be amended, in my opinion. I agree. The first part of the motion is describing the annual town meeting vote previously made, approved to borrow. It's just describing what happened at last year's annual town meeting. And then the second or third clause is to amend to allow for this third option, or second option, instead of borrowing, a lease purchase agreement. And then the town will need to separately appropriate the funds for this, for the first year that a payment is due. So this is authorizing the town to enter the lease purchase agreement. We don't need to identify the appropriation here because we don't know what the first annual payment will be at this time. That will come in June at the annual.
How would you recommend that the motion be amended?
I can't make a motion. I can.
I was asking for a recommendation on that wording.
That the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article 17 of the June 14, 2022 annual town meeting, which authorized the town to borrow the sum of 305 to purchase and equip a new ambulance, to authorize the town to.
Yeah, I got you. So you don't want.
To authorize the Select Board to enter into a lease purchase financing agreement in accordance with the provisions of GLC 44, Section 21(c) for a period of up to five years.
I would entertain an amendment that simply struck the words that provided the town to borrow the sum of $305,000 and merely have this be a motion to amend the vote taken under Article 17 of the June 24, 22 annual town meeting to purchase and equip a new ambulance and then so on as it was read before. Would that amendment solve our problem?
So long as the motion continues to say that the Select Board is authorized to enter the lease purchase agreement and that it is for a period of up to five years.
Okay. I'm looking for an amendment to strike the words from the original motion that provided the town to borrow a sum of $305,000. I have such an amendment. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to make that correction to the wording. I'm going to call, does it may need an explanation of what we're doing here? It's just that it wasn't worded right. Matt pointed that out. So I'm going to take a vote on the amendment. We're not deciding whether we're going to do this right now. We're just going to decide whether we're going to fix that wording. All those in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries unanimously. The motion is amended. I am going to read the motion as amended. The motion is that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article 17 of June 14, 2022 annual town meeting to purchase and equip a new ambulance and to further authorize the Select Board to enter into a lease purchase financing agreement in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c) for a period of up to five years for said purchase, to use such appropriations as the funding source for this purchase. All right? Any questions? Because I think, oh, I got a question. Yep, go ahead.
Chris Corville, 24 Circle Road. What is, what changed in the town's budget that is requiring this amendment and not sticking with the original plan?
Can I get, maybe Finance, can you kind of help us with why we'd want to do a lease purchase agreement instead of just borrowing?
Mr. Moderator, I believe the intention at the annual town meeting was to originally have a lease purchase, but there was, the language was not correct in the article written, and therefore it had to be rewritten to be revoted to officially be a lease purchase agreement.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move to a vote. Because there's borrowing maybe involved, we're going to need a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're moving on to Article 4. It's very similar, except instead of being about an ambulance, it's about a fire truck, and we're going to try to get the wording right from the outset. So I'm going to, I will entertain a motion on Article 4 when you're ready.
I move the town vote to amend the vote taken on Article 18 of the June 14, 2022 annual town meeting to purchase and equip a new fire truck and to further authorize the Select Board to enter into a lease purchase financing agreement in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c) for the purpose, for the period of up to seven years for such purchase.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Because I know that it differed a lot from what was printed in the warrant. It still falls within what we call the four corners. It is covered by what this warrant article was, but it was much more specific. Mr. Urban, did you have a question?
Matt Urban, Williamsville Road. The question, my understanding was the limitation was five years, not seven. So I'm not sure you want to carry a motion that says seven because the AG will reject it again. So you may want to think about that and just make sure we're presenting the appropriate term that you're referencing.
Town Council, you want to address that?
I'm sorry, was the concern that the article said five and the motion said seven?
The concern is that the Attorney General will not allow a seven versus a five because my understanding is that was part of the reason it had to be rewritten and reamended was the term of the lease exceeded five years, and I thought there was a cap on lease agreements to five years.
There is in general contracting, but for the lease purchase agreement statute generally, which is referred to in the article, the term can be what the useful life of the equipment is. And so it just has to be defined in the motion. In this instance, we're going with seven in the Select Board and the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee's discretion because it's a much more expensive piece of equipment. Generally, it's going to last longer than an ambulance, so the seven-year term seems appropriate in their judgment. It'll make the annual payments less. But, but to answer your generally accurate statement about lease agreements, for a lease purchase agreement under the statute, it just has to be the useful life of the equipment.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Yes.
Cheryl Southwick, while Winnet Road. Would you explain to us why we need a new fire truck, please?
James Steverdillo, Barry Fire Department. This would be replacing our engine number five. Our engine number five is a 1990 engine. It has experienced quite a bit of rot. The pump has failed pump testing. A lot of the parts are becoming obsolete to acquire, to repair.
Thank you. I neglected to ask the Finance Committee for their recommendation on this.
Mr. Moderator, again, it's complex. Annual town meeting 2022, the Finance Committee was not favorable for the purchase of the fire truck. The town did overwhelmingly vote to approve the purchase of the fire truck. If the town chooses to lease, to purchase for seven years, five years, even 10 years, just as we suggested last year, there's not much way we can incorporate that cost into our operating budget without having a deeper impact. So prior, prior to our meeting today with General Counsel, we were under the impression, the Finance Committee was under the impression that we had the option to have a lease purchase agreement to be debt excluded. The Finance Committee was favorable to that option. We were informed tonight that is not an option. It's really to move forward the article as it was previously voted, if I'm correct, and then have an option to debt exclude later or enter into an agreement for lease purchase. To be transparent, the Finance Committee has not made a recommendation with that recent adjustment to the language because we are in active meeting right now and we could make a recommendation with the adjusted language today.
So right now you have no recommendation?
I would revert back to our recommendation at annual town meeting in 2022 that we are unfavorable.
Thank you. More questions? Mr. Lipson?
I understand that this fire truck is of such a size, and please, if I'm incorrect, please tell me this, of such a size that we don't currently have a place to store it or might and might not have a place to place it unless we do some amending in the garages that fire trucks generally are housed. Now, I happened to be at the Selectmen's meeting when the chief, who's currently not here, spoke about it, and he mentioned that, he brought it to the attention of the Board and to the citizens at the, at the meeting, and explained that they were given some type of a grant, but not a grant for the full amount, and that he had certain cautions that at this point, they didn't have a place to store this piece of equipment. And I didn't understand that, and I still don't understand, buying a piece of equipment that we don't have a place to place it, even though we may or may not need it, I don't know. But thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Can we get an answer on that?
James Steverdillo, Barry Fire Department. This truck has been spec'd to fit in the bay that Engine 5 currently sits in at Station 2 in South Barry.
Thank you. Any other questions about the motion on the floor? Mr. Urban?
Can you tell the town how many engines the Barry Fire Department currently has and how does that compare to our neighboring towns?
James Steverdillo, Barry Fire Department. The town of Barry currently has one engine tanker and three engines. I believe the town of Hubbardston has two engine takers and two engines. The town of Rutland, I believe, has a tanker, two engines, and I'm not 100% sure what New Braintree or Hardwork is. I believe Hardwork has two engines and a tanker.
Thank you. Any other questions? Discussion on this motion? Yes, sir.
Chris Corville, 24 Circle Road. Finance Committee has said not favorable. I'm curious, if this doesn't pass, what other options can we seek? Have, or have those been explored already? Probably a question for the Fire Department.
Thank you. Just to be clear, this is a motion to amend a previously approved motion. That previously approved motion had some defects, and so obviously another possibility would be to look at amending in a different way. But if we decided not to get a fire truck, I guess is the question?
James Steverdillo, Barry Fire. I, I guess we would run that engine until it died or until we can't find the parts to make it safe to run anymore. I'm not 100% sure how to answer that.
Thank you. Okay, is there a follow-up?
I guess what I was alluding to is it, I don't buy fire trucks, so is there a used market for fire trucks? Is there, what other options are out there? I'm just thinking outside the box, that's all. I'm not saying it's one better or the other. I'm just trying to think outside the box.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall, do you have an answer to that?
I have some information, I think, that would maybe clarify things. When the article that we are amending tonight to clean up legalese was passed by well above a two-thirds vote in June, the town administrator and the fire chief worked together with agencies that build fire trucks, and because there, it had passed, there was no knowledge in that office that it didn't, we needed to make some, you know, adjustments. So there is an agreement, at least tacit one, with the build company to build this fire truck. If we were to walk away, we would be responsible for paying a portion of a truck we couldn't have in the end. So I would tell you that the confusion between what was voted in June, and it was not the recommendation of the Finance Committee to approve the truck at that time, it was voted by, in a larger majority, because it was over two-thirds of the Assembly voted to purchase or have that truck. So we have in the mix now the truck actually under construction. It's very difficult because they don't really tell you where it is in the line of Assembly. And the contract that was entered into by the fire chief after the result of the town meeting last June, there is a clause in there that would say, depending on where they are in the build, we would owe a portion of something we will never own. So we're sort of caught between the great need we have for this fire truck because we are convinced as a Select Board, we voted in favor that once the town meeting made that decision. we voted in favor that once the town meeting made that decision that we would move forward with the purchase of a, or acquiring the truck. We did not find out that there was problems with the language until well into, okay, this last fiscal year because we had transferred our attorney's business to KP Law. As you know, we had the same attorney for 50 years previous to that. So we moved forward, predicated on the best information we had and the legal advice we had at the time. So we do have a bill. It's like you ordered the Subaru, guys. And you, you put $50 down or whatever, or $500 down. So we are in, we're, we're going to have to pay something to either get out of this or pay it all and get the truck. I mean, that's as honest as I can be.
Thank you. Does Finance Committee have a comment?
Mr. Moderator, I would ask if we could have Counsel explain the difference of the language that was originally printed here of the lease purchase with the debt exclusion. And to explain to the voters here of what the process would be would need to be followed if the town was to debt exclude this purchase. It is not uncommon for large purchases such as the fire truck, which Chief Rogowski did, he presented to the Finance Committee. And as a resident, I'm not saying the town does not need a fire truck to replace and have the apparatus. It comes down to the funding source. Having the funding source come from the operating budget is going to be difficult. The town does have a need for a fire truck, but that need may, may have to go through debt exclusion. And to be transparent, if the town was to take delivery or begin paying on a, on a debt-excluded fire truck, say in fiscal '25, the impact we had earlier to our tax bill, it, it's, it's difficult to give a clear answer to that today because we don't know the interest rate, right? However, you can do basic math and get a rough idea of $700,000 over if we were to do a ban, a bond anticipated note over 10 years, that's debt-excluded. You can kind of rough, rough that out to, you know, $85 to $100 per year for the average $300,000 home. Those are rough numbers, right? The other thing is, is we have debt-excluded, debt-excluded debt on our books, which will soon roll off. We have the, the Barry Common ban. It will be paid off in 2025. So that will reduce the impact to the tax rate. We're kind of, we would just kind of trade dollars if the town would approve a debt exclusion on, on the fire truck. And then in 2027, I'm sorry, 2029, Ruggles Lane Roof is paid off in full. So I just want to, and if we could, Mr. Moderator, have Counsel just kind of explain the diff, what would need to be done and, and why we remove the language of debt exclusion from the article.
Sure. So I think your question is, he already explained that we can't do debt exclusion of lease purchase agreements. So are you asking, how would we change the language to not do a lease purchase agreement and instead do traditional borrowing? Is that the question?
That is correct because I believe the motion on the floor is to approve a seven-year lease agreement.
Right. Okay. I don't think we need Counsel for that. If you wanted to make a, a motion to amend, you're free to do so. The, the motion to amend would be something along the lines of to strike the language around lease purchase agreement and instead authorize borrowing. There's no need to say anything about debt exclusion because Town Meeting doesn't do that. Debt exclusion is done by the Board of Selectmen.
The, the Board of Selectmen and then ballot vote.
And then, right, and then the ballot, yeah.
So I, I would make a motion to strike the language of a lease purchase agreement and for the town to borrow the funds of the previously approved fire truck.
Can we hear from Town Counsel on that?
So through you, Mr. Moderator. If that were to be the course, my recommendation would be to pass over this article. We already have the authority to borrow from the Annual Town Meeting approval. So then the next process, we would pass over this article and then the Board of Selectmen would elect, in its discretion, to present to the voters at a special election a debt exclusion vote for this debt. But we would not need a separate vote tonight because we already have approval to borrow from last year's Annual Town Meeting. The vote tonight would only authorize the Select, the, the, the town to, to enter a lease purchase agreement.
Thank you. So since there's been no second on the motion to amend, and it sounds like if the amendment were to pass, it would have exactly the same result as simply the article failing, the main article failing. Would you, I have no second on that amendment. Do you want?
I second the amendment.
Okay.
The original motion.
You have a? You, you second that amendment? Okay, there's amendment on the floor. As Town Counsel has just explained, if this amendment passes, then essentially, we're doing nothing to what happened last summer. No, he, he just made a motion to amend. I heard him. And you second it? Mr. Urban, would you please come, step up to the microphone?
His motion was to not act on this article.
No.
Because he said he already has the borrowing so he can then do debt exclusion later.
Mr. Urban, he made a motion to strike, the Finance Committee Chair made a motion to amend to strike the language about doing a lease purchase agreement and instead rely on borrowing. That was a motion to-
I misunderstood because I thought Counsel just said you don't need to.
Counsel can't make motions. Counsel is not a member of our town meeting. There was a motion to amend made by a member of our town meeting.
I admit I misunderstood.
Okay. So we're back to not having a second on the motion to amend. Hearing no second. We have a sec, okay, now we have, we have a motion and a second. So we have a second on the motion to amend. Town Counsel advises that if we amend the main motion in this way, it will have the same effect as if we simply defeat the main motion. However, we can go ahead and make that motion to amend. Is there any discussion about the motion to amend? Yep.
Which one would cost the town less money in interest?
Can I get an answer to that question? As to whether this amendment would cost the town less money?
Mr. Moderator, that answer is unclear. We would not know until the actual document to borrow is drawn up. Same goes for a purchase-lease agreement. We would not know those interest rates. What we do know is we could probably extend, just like a lease purchase, and I believe Counsel could agree on this, a ban's usually about 10 years. So we could extend that purchase out to have a, a lower year-over-year impact.
Are there any other questions about the motion to amend? Yes, sir.
Michael Wood, Fisher Road. I guess I'd request some clarification here. The language in the article of the June meeting was not specific enough, is my understanding. So we came here tonight and the warrant that's printed talks of us taking a vote for funding of this piece of equipment, which I agree that the Fire Department needs. And it would include a debt exclusion. Then, then, as Selectman Marshall presented, it was presented as a lease similar to the ambulance, which there was comments made that it was not a debt exclusion being considered here tonight. Now, I believe there's an amendment that puts it back on borrowing and the possibility that the Selectmen will determine whether there's a debt exclusion. And that would require a vote of the community. Is that correct?
Everything you just said is correct, yes. Just so that, let me clarify a procedural issue here. So we, there's a town meeting warrant, right? This is the thing that the Select Board signed. Town meeting warrants cover things that you're going to talk about and have a motion in regards to. And they're often written very broadly. In Barry in particular, we do not generally say where money is coming from in the warrant article. When we get to town meeting, someone makes a motion and it's much more specific, right? So although the warrant article mentioned a debt exclusion, the motion doesn't have to, and it didn't. Although the warrant article said things about borrowing, the motion didn't say anything about borrowing because it didn't have to. So we only have a motion, the original motion, which was basically to let the Select Board enter into a lease purchase agreement. And we have a, an amendment on the floor right now not to let them do that.
So we vote on the amendment first?
We will vote on the amendment first. Mr. Urban?
The amendment now turns it back to the borrowing of the original article last year that allows for debt exclusion. I would say that right now, we are in the midst of a wonderful world of inflation, unknown rising costs that are impacting our fixed-income population. I do believe that setting this up so you can do a debt exclusion, no matter how little you think that might be to an individual, can be very large to certain individuals. And I do believe that to move forward with amending this motion that will allow debt exclusion to be applied later at a different time, in a different manner, where you don't have 175 people in front of the Select Board saying no, that you're going to be in a position where you may end up having to pay a lot more in taxes, depending on your feelings and your situation, than you want to pay. So I would suggest think about this. And if you want to not have any of the articles tonight go under debt exclusion, do not pass the amendment to the motion on the floor at the moment.
Thank you. Any further discussion of the amendment? Mr. Lipson?
I'm hoping I'm clear in regard to this. And I understand that Barry does not have a bond rating. In other words, a town is rated, I don't know if it's A, B, C, D, or 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, but each town has a borrowing capacity based on their ability to repay, such as a FICO score. Everybody knows that. Either 600 is low, 800 is high. Barry is in the uncomfortable position to not even be, it has not been determined whether Barry is 600 or Barry is 800. And that's called not having a bond rating. And the reason why, please, someone smarter than I, if you know the answer, please tell me. The reason why, I believe, is that Barry historically, over the years, has, excuse me, has not gotten its shit together to be able to obtain a bond rating. And without a bond rating, it costs us significantly more money to borrow, to buy things. And if you guys in Finance can clarify this, please. And if you want to tell me I'm wrong, I'm the, I'm the first one to listen to.
Ms. Marshall?
That's true. The town of Barry does not have a bond rating that would allow us to, to borrow at the lowest possible rates. That is not unusual for very small towns anywhere in America, let alone just in Massachusetts or for Barry. Barry has some issues in its concern. When we have our audits, our annual audits, there's some issues of concern that are brought to our attention and we work hard to remediate those. That's when you see the extra money we spent on the treasurer's job. That was what we were trying to do, to get ourselves situated, to move forward to getting the bond rating that would be helpful to us. Understand that we need three years of a clean audit consecutively to get a bond rating. And then that bond rating would be something that Moody's actually spends time with. And it may not, it may not be 800. It may be 600. And it may be 600 not because things aren't done to perfection, but because the capacity of the organization to pay, to, to generate revenue, may be looked at with a jaundiced eye. Saying under two and a half, having to have people not appreciate that sometimes a debt exclusion is a tool. It's a tool that is put in place in Massachusetts to handle, okay, things like fire trucks, things like roofs, things like a common restoration and so forth. Not all things are popular, for sure. And certainly, fire trucks are absolute necessities, but it's sort of, everybody sits around and say, well, do we really need that? Well, until your house is the one burning down and they can't get to it, I guess we all say, the other guy can worry about it. My concern is, yeah, that we'd have a bond issue problem, but it doesn't mean we can't borrow. It just makes it potentially a little more expensive. We have to try to work very hard to understand we debt-excluded the Ruggles Lane Roof without hesitation, without problem. We debt-excluded the Common Project without hesitation. And it wasn't two or three times. And we debt-excluded other school projects. We've debt-excluded situations where we know it's in our best interest to get things paid off and not to try to do it out of our, our general operating budget. It's controversial, no question about it. I stand with the, with the Budget and Finance Committee that maybe we have to consider a debt exclusion. But we will do that as a Select Board in concert with the Budget and Finance Committee as we look at, what is it actually going to cost us? What do we have to do to get the best possible deal for the town? I wish I could just say, wave you a magic wand tonight and say, this is exactly what it's going to cost. This is exactly the number of feet it's going to take up in a garage. We have that information. But figuring out the best way to finance it will, in a, in a borrowing. I mean, we can do statehouse notes. We can do that without a bond rating. So there's things we can do to borrow money. So we'll, we'll obviously use this general borrowing capacity to do the best job we can for the town. All of us who sit at that seat on Monday night, we all pay taxes too. We appreciate, you know, the concerns that you have. And sometimes it gets very difficult to say, yeah, it's going to cost us a little more money to borrow the fire truck, no question. And if we put it into the regular budget, there'll be other things, I think Mr. Urban makes the point, there'll be other things we can't do. We'll, you know, we have to look at, you know, what, what services do we provide now? And if the fire truck comes on, we may have to scrimp a little on some of those service delivery patterns. But you know what? We have to put the best interests of the town and the taxpayer in, in our mind and keep, and our focus on doing the best possible thing for the town, providing the services you need, but also being very concerned about the health and safety of you every single day.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is a motion to amend. You have a comment about that? Okay.
Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to provide some clarification of what's being asked of the town and why I made a motion to strike the seven-year lease agreement from Article Four. The town just passed Article Three, which is a five-year lease agreement for $305,000. Not including interest, that's roughly $60,000, $65,000 a year coming out of the operating budget. The motion for a seven-year lease purchase agreement for a $700,000 truck, that's another $100,000 out of the operating budget on top of the $60,000, $65,000 we just passed, not including interest. You're now asking us, the town, to find $165,000 a year over the next seven years out of the operating budget. the operating budget. Those of us who were at annual town meeting last year realized how much we had to adjust and scrimp and save to accommodate the small increase of $100,000 to accommodate the school. As a resident, as a Chair of the Finance Committee, I don't know, I understand the budget we're working on, I've been part of this now for three years, and I don't see a path for the town being able to afford, out of the operating budget, $165,000 for the next five to seven years. So I believe the town definitely needs a fire truck, but I also feel that we have the path through debt exclusion, especially to answer, Mr. Moderator, some of the other concerns with other debt exclusions falling off, that they will somewhat offset and have a minimal long-term impact to the taxpayer.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall, you have something?
The debt exclusion that was just passed at ballot for the $172,000 amount, that will fall off the tax rate, I believe, in FY '26. So that's good news. So that debt exclusion that was just passed will only impact us for about three or four years, and we're happy about that. So we will have capacity in the, when debt falls off, that's when you add new debt if you have to, because it keeps the tax rate as flat as possible.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Jason Pimental, Huzz Hill Road. I think we're getting way off track with this article. I think what most people in this room need to realize, this truck has already been approved, a signed contract by the previous town administrator. The truck is being built. All this is, is a different tool to finance it. As you spoke about the bond rating, our bond rate isn't there, so it's going to cost us more money. Historically, a municipal lease purchase is going to be a lower interest rate, is going to cost the town less money. It's going to be a shorter term, it's going to be hard to, you know, whatever the Finance Committee has to do to make that happen. But just to be clear, this is already bought. Like, the truck has a signed contract. The town is on the hook for up to 80% of the purchase price if it doesn't follow through with it. So it seems pretty foolish to me to not purchase a fire truck if we got to pay 80% for it anyways.
Thank you. Just so everyone understands, we're not voting on whether we're buying the fire truck. As he said, this vote has to do with how we're financing the fire truck that we already decided to buy. There's an amendment on the floor to strike the language allowing the Board of Selectmen to enter into a lease purchase agreement. I'm going to call a vote on that amendment. If you vote yes on the amendment, then essentially, there won't be anything left in the motion that's on the floor, because that was the only thing it was doing. But we have an amendment on the floor, we're going to have a vote on that. So if you vote yes on this amendment, the selectmen will not be allowed to enter into a lease purchase agreement. If you vote no on the amendment, we'll go back to the original motion. All right? Everyone understand? No. So if you vote yes on the amendment, if you say yes, then we'll essentially have a motion to amend and make no changes, that we'll then go back and vote on. If you vote no, then we're back to the original motion, and you can decide up or down, should we stick with borrowing like we already decided last year, or should we switch to a lease purchase agreement? We can make that decision in a minute. If you vote yes on this amendment, we won't be able to make that decision anymore. It will have been made. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. All those opposed to the amendment, please say nay. The amendment fails. We're back to the original motion. The original motion was to amend last year's vote to, instead of borrowing, to allow the Board of Selectmen to enter into a lease purchase agreement to pay for the fire truck. Is there any more discussion of the main motion? Yes, sir.
Chris Corville, 24 Circle Road. I like the sound of the lease agreement, because I think this is going to put the town in a situation that's going to force us to really dig deep how we're going to afford this. As a Finance Committee member said, it might be tough, we might not be able to do it, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there if this passes. And I think part of a healthy town budget is, yes, the taxpayers paying their taxes, but also the departments finding cuts. And I'm not saying getting rid of people or necessary things, but every municipal department has fat can be trimmed. And I think collectively as a group, that might be a better option in this case.
Thank you. Mr. Urban.
Another item I know that we had done in the past, it's not normally what you would do, but we are in an odd financial situation in the world today, is free cash can be used to pay this off, this particular debt, so it doesn't have a direct impact to your two and a half levy. So in other words, it can also be used as an additional funding source to help offset certain things. Or free cash could be used towards other operating expenses on top of your tax levy. So that is another option to work through the problems over the next few years until other debt exclusions are cleared out and other funding opens up.
Any other comments on the main motion? Seeing none, we're going to move to voting, and I'm going to remind everybody what we're voting on. So if you vote yes, do... Hang on a second, I'm getting, I'm getting some baseball signals that I don't understand because he's brand-new town council and we haven't gone through the signs yet. So the motion that we're about to vote on was that the town amend the vote taken under Article 18 of last year's town meeting to purchase a equipped fire truck, to authorize the select board to enter into a lease purchase financing agreement in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), for a period of up to seven years for said purchase. All right? So all we're voting on is to change the way that we're going to pay for that fire truck we already decided last year to buy. So instead of borrowing to pay for it, like with bonds and stuff like that, we're going to enter into a lease purchase agreement to pay for it. Does everyone understand what the motion is? Great. All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed to the motion, please say no. The motion carries with more than two-thirds. That's all that we have on the warrant. I want to note that the principal of the Quabin Regional Middle High School has authorized that students can get community service time for coming to these meetings. And if any students of the high school are here and want me to sign their paperwork so they get their hours, please see me after the meeting for that. I would entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of dissolving the meeting, please say aye. Thank you very much.